Programming on WCS TV, channel 180, is made possible in part through donations from your McMinnville State Farm agents, Lee Holland, Norm Barnes, Neil Helton, and Bill Sackman.
Programming on WCS TV is brought to you in part by donation from Robert Oliver Bratcher of the Stanley and Bratcher Law Firm, located at 100 West Main Street in McMinnville, Tennessee.
This time I'd like to call Warren County School Board meeting to order. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes. At this time I'd like to ask Ms. Martin to listen and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes. Student advisory.
Hi. Okay. Warren County High School Trevor Gaines has been recently signed a letter of intent to continue his academic and athletic career at Maryville College. Isaiah Grayson has been recognized as athlete of the year for Warren County High School. The environmental team has competed last week in the regional environmental bond, and they placed second out of 20 teams. And the results from the students already are actually back. We actually had a bit of a problem with survey mapping. So one of the graphs is not completely pulled out.
I stand up and I sit down.
Okay. Thirty seven, so seventy-four percent have said they do enjoy attending school, which is a good number, so we're really proud about that. Something that I'm a little concerned about is out of 381 kids on number nine, they say that thirty-six percent do feel bullied. That is not a huge number, it is kind of big, and I think that we should work on something to bring that down. On the back, sixty-six percent do plan to go to a four-year university after high school. And sixty-seven percent of the seniors do understand about Tennessee promise.
Do I have any questions for student advisory? We're just saying this for the first time, so we're kind of...
I'm sorry.
That's okay. And I probably agree with you, that bullying in schools is, I think, our teachers are fully aware of that, and I think they are working hard to to work on stopping any bullying in Tennessee. And I would encourage students to do the same. But I think we're keenly aware if that's an issue, need some attention.
Yeah, Ms. Wood and Robin have been working on that the last couple of years and putting a bullying program in place. And I think they, you know, reported, you know, back a couple of months ago on work that they've been... I think that that has helped the, but it definitely is something that we try to keep our finger on and continually do that. I thought it was very encouraging on question thirteen, you know, do you have further plans to ed, to further education after high school? And they've had eighty-one percent. State, they'll be going to their four-year or two-year school. So I thought that was very encouraging, thirty percent pick out, sixteen percent didn't know right now, but I think that's encouraging. Also with twelve, that seventy-five percent felt that they were ready for workforce or unemployment.
That is very positive, that's certainly one of the highlights. I would express a little concern about question fourteen. Do you somewhat understand about the Tennessee promise scholarship available to graduating seniors? And I like the way this is ordered, do you somewhat understand, that's not asking for, you know, a complete, you know, a complete analysis of the plan, but just, I guess what that means is an acquaintance?
Yes.
Just a little bit of familiarity? I would have thought the number would be higher than sixty-seven percent. I'm just wondering, does that, does that reflect on maybe guidance counts for interaction with students? You know, somebody needs to be telling their students about this availability. If only sixty-seven percent admit to knowing anything about it, basically.
Well, I think this is just the high school part?
Well, I think this is even the, what, eighth grade?
Yes, it's all the county schools. It surveyed the seventh and eighth graders. Let's see, I didn't write date, oh, yeah. On the front page, the very first question, it tells you the number of responses from the high school, the number of responses from the middle school, and so on. So you can kind of get an idea, there was like a little over a thousand students that answered the survey. So it kind of puts it in perspective about, you know, why it wasn't higher on knowing that.
If we had, if we sort of had it broken down, presumably the high school, which had only nineteen percent of your total, that's not really a nineteen percent response rate out of the student body, that's not necessarily what that means. Middle school, forty-six percent of the total responses. What would be nice to see would be the percentage of response as a ratio of the total student body, that would be, that would be nice. But of course, this one is, you know, water under the bridge, this one's done. One thing that, that I saw that is a matter of concern is, is question eleven. At least one day per week, you don't have enough food to eat, and twenty-five percent said yes. That is definitely a matter of concern, twenty-five percent. We appreciate your work on this. Good.
Appreciate that, thank you very much. Good job. Sorry, this survey might be a issue. You got pulled off very well, thank you.
This survey might be a problem.
No.
Is it approved?
No.
We got, we got...
Yeah, it's a big race.
Is there any way to increase...
We have a subscription for our system.
I thought...
Is there any way to increase the numbers of responses?
Um, now, when I send it out, as far as I know, they, I don't know how many children are in county schools as far as sixth and seventh graders, or seventh and eighth graders. Uh, we could expand the, you know, and get six, seventh and eighth graders. I think I surveyed only the seventh and eighth graders. But getting them in there, because they're, you know, every, well, it might be easier with middle school, of course, but getting the kids in a computer lab, kind of messes around with schedules. So that does, especially at the high school, that's a difficult one to do. And so we kind of got everybody in the computer lab and everybody placed up for it, they had computers. So I don't know how many kids are in the seventh and eighth graders.
Well, in relation to what, eighteen hundred students and two hundred in the class, that's, and then load them.
We've had that issue, before I got student advisory, they took him, you know, hit scan drones. So they were able to hit more because the kids would go around, pass up, and they'd bubble them in. But again, you're taking a lot of less time to do that. And so that's why we have such a problem. And, you know, right around testing time and all that, it's just really hard to, especially when you've got your English and your math teachers, it's kind of hard to juggle around the schedule and trying to get everything in. So we just kind of do it with the, with the computer classes.
This is what we're taking during the testing marathon, too, was...
It was intertwined.
Testing marathon, lights from April to June.
I think number four splits highly by teachers, when you say, do your teachers make you feel welcome? Ninety-four percent are always often sometimes, that's ninety-four percent of our teachers. That's a very high mark. That's impressive. Anything else for student advisory? Thank you, please post myself. Right, we'll have recognition, and we'll ask Ms. Vlade, if she would like to come up and do our recognition. Thank you very much.
I would like to recommend Dawn Whitten for employee of the month in Warren County Schools. Dawn has shown great courage and determination in successfully creating our first distance learning broadcast from Warren County Senior High School. In the past, that's been done from Dibble, and we had to move that to the high school, and Dawn became a true pioneer in that when we asked for somebody to do that, she stepped out and said she would do it. And it's been an innovation for us at the high school, as well as in education in Warren County. Dawn has worked feverishly to not only know the Core One math curriculum, but also the instructional strategies are most effective for not only her ninth grade students that sit in front of her on a daily basis, but for the diverse eighth grade students that she serves every day, and they access her instruction from Urban College in Dibble by way of television. This is a very different thing for most teachers, and it's even more different when you're planning and instructing students who aren't actually sitting in front of you. Dawn has invested much of her time and own energy in not only learning how to run the sophisticated distance learning equipment, but also how to be successful in modeling instruction, not only for herself and her students that she sits with, but also for being able to reach into those classrooms of students that she's virtually talking to through the specific software and television and complicated equipment that we have, that sometimes functions correctly and sometimes doesn't. Dawn arrives early each day to be sure that the equipment is ready and that her plans will work for all students. Ms. Whitten collaborates with Ms. George at Urban College and DeeDee Holmes at Dibble on a daily basis to not only plan for those students, but to assess those students. Together, they craft new strategies and designs to remediate or accelerate learning for each of those students. I take great pride in nominating Dawn Whitten as the innovative educator for this month. She's truly a wonderful teacher with a great focus on learning. Dawn? Would you like to present this?
It's all you.
It's all me? Well, I want to present it to you, and I'd like to say that I can't in a few words be able to tell you the kinds of things that she's done with those students, but she's done a tremendous job, and she's made, she has reached into other communities. She even goes out to the students, and she's met with them on a couple of occasions. When she had free time at the high school, Jimmy released her so that she might go to Urban College, so that the students could actually touch her and know she was real. And then she's been to Dibble a time or two. And then, you know, the two other people that I mentioned, Ms. George and Ms. Holmes, they do a great job in just assisting Dawn, because there are endless conversations that go on before they go on the air afterwards, and even text messaging all the time.
Lots of text messaging.
And so I present that to Dawn, but she's a deserving teacher, and we're so proud of her. And then I want her to give you a word or two about the distance learning programs she will.
Well, this was, I wasn't expecting this. I just thought I was coming to talk about the class. Thank you very much.
You're so welcome.
Thank you very much for that call, I'm sorry. I don't feel like I deserve a whole lot of credit for how successful these students are, because they are amazing. I've got thirty-six students, I've got seventeen in front of me at the high school. All of them, I mean, they, they know the drill, they know they have to be quiet because they get hurt all over the county. You know, if they're trying to have a personal conversation, they get to hear it in Urban College. But the students that I get to work with in Urban College in Dibble are just, I mean, they're not even really, they're getting everything all in one year, and they're getting it through technology, through me, a television screen. And at first, the first time I went out there, it was kind of funny, because it was like they were moving their reality, you know. We were, and I'd only seen them on TV, too, and I told them, and I said, it's like moving someone you see on TV. But it's been a great experience. We're learning every day still what works and what doesn't work, but something's working. We've been pretty much able, we've had some technology glitches. Up until recently, we were keeping up with the high school honors class. We're, we've fallen a little bit further behind, we may catch up by the end of the year, but I do feel like these students are going to be ready for Core Two, many of them, or Core One honors when they get to the high school. They'll be prepared for that. That's what they want to do, they're self-motivated, which makes my job wonderfully easy. And I was just, you know, I don't want to keep talking because I will forever, because I really like this class, but we just had a test, which I gave to my regular Core One class, and then I gave to this class, and our technology has not been working lately. So I've been giving the kids the lessons remotely, they've been watching some videos. When we can talk, we talk. When they took this test, out of my thirty-six kids, thirty-four of them were at ninety percent or better. Which is amazing when I compare that to the results of some of the kids that I get to actually teach in front of every day. So like I said, I think that the kids really probably deserve this as much as I do. But thank you very much.
We appreciate Dawn taking that on, Vlade nominated her and working with her on that. That's been, it's been a great class, and we had to get some things worked out at the beginning of the year, and have done that. She's done a really great job. And we glad that, we didn't want to bring you here on false preferences, but...
Your PowerPoint.
Yeah, Vlade told me yesterday that, yeah, Vlade told me yesterday you're a little anxious about, you know, your time. She said, well, it'll be short, it'll be great. So we didn't want to bring you here on false preferences, but congratulations.
It's fine, I appreciate it.
My wife works with her also, and I know you go through a lot of frustrations with that, but...
Well, not your wife, though. Your wife is a boy, she is a blessing with that class.
And you've done a great job with it. I know, I know it means a lot to those kids at Dibble and kids at Urban College that are going through that with you. And it wouldn't happen without you, and we appreciate that. And if you need any technology help, Bill knows everything about that.
Sure.
The kids count me out a lot, they're actually...
But thank you. All right, this time we'll ask for operations report, Mr. Fox.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have a quite lengthy operations report, so I'll try to go through it as quickly as I can. The first item was flu vaccines, and Sonia Walker was going to be here, she had an issue where she can't be, so we're going to put that off till next month, and she'll bring us a report on how our flu vaccinations have gone in the schools. Went very well. Second item, just wanted to get your approval for the second item, it's been in your packet. Mr. Tidwell asked about possibly having, splitting up the cheerleading at the middle school and having a dance team, which would be kind of a theater program for the piñerets at the high school. You know, the numbers have kind of dropped off there. And Penny Shockley has also started a little program, I think, for county schools. And just wanted to get your approval to move forward with this. It wouldn't be a new position, it wouldn't be any new money in the budget. They would be splitting a supplement, but they would just have to split the duties of cheerleader and dance team. So I thought it was a good idea, and he's willing to do that. And I just, if you don't have any questions, I'd like to ask your approval for that.
Mr. Chairman, I've read, read the initial proposal, and, I mean, it's been some time ago, but everything looks good to me, so I'm on a move for authorization for the middle school dance team.
Okay, we have a motion for the Warren County Middle School to create the dance team. Do I have a second?
I second.
Have a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes.
Thank you, thank you for that, we'll move forward with that. Next item, the grant, there's a contract, just wanted to explain that a little bit. This is for the Governor's Academy for School Leadership Program. This is a reimbursement contract. Farrah Griffith, as I mentioned last week, is a participant, one of twenty-five in the state, to be in that program. And Mike Mansfield is her mentor. And this will reimburse us for their travel, and also provide them a stoppin' for the work that they're doing outside of school hours. So just wanted to give you that for your information, and probably be good to go ahead and approve the acceptance of that money for, for the contract, it's thirty-five hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-five cents. Is the contract, and the State Department of Education will reimburse us upon completion of that program.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the grant for the Governor's Academy for School Leadership Program.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes.
Thank you very much for that. Next item would be our textbook adoption for this year. This year is our CTE courses. The list, I think, is provided there for you. Our committees have met and decided to adopt these texts. There are two areas, the advanced manufacturing area. You'll see noted there that the following books are not on the adopted list. So one of the requirements is the local board would have to adopt that, and then we would make applications to the State Department to adopt those texts. And also, there's one in our culinary arts, and teachers felt like that these books were better than what's on the adopted list for those items. The other items are on the adopted list that the State Textbook Committee approved. And the, most of these items are online, so they're free materials online. So hopefully, we can make use of those. So I would, Mr. Pierce has verified those, our committees have approved those, so I'll just recommend adoption of those textbooks for the sixteen, seventeen school year and the six years of adoption.
All right, so are there any, any discussion in that? Do we have a motion?
I have a motion.
Do we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Thank you.
Okay, next item is our special course application. It's on the two-cycle engine, one and two and three class. Vlade may have to correct me if I'm wrong on this, but these two classes are being cycled out, as I understand it, I think, of the state's curriculum, and they'll be replaced with two other courses. But we have some students in the pipeline who still need these courses, and we can, for one more year as a senior. So we can make special course application to complete their focus area with this for one more year, help those students. So that's what this is. And I just need the board's approval for those two classes for one more, one more year to benefit our students.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the special courses of the two to four cycle engine, two and three?
Motion.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes.
Okay. Next item, I think, is our coordinated school health application, I think you have a copy. Oh, it's under contract, so we've already approved that, I'll give you an update on that. The, we, every year, we have to have a coordinated school health application that goes into the state that allows us to gather that money from the state to go into our budget for coordinated school health. So that was, that contract was in the consent agenda, but that's what that was. The request, next item would be a request for Fayetteville City Schools to piggyback off of our computer bid. We recently rebid computers. The state allows school districts and other government agencies to piggyback off of bids that have already been done. We, we've done that before on, you know, state bids or national bids. And it just requires that the local school board allow another school district to do that. Their board would still have to approve it, and the state would still have to approve it. So just like to request that Fayetteville City be able to piggyback off of our bid pending their board approval.
Mr. Chairman, I so moved.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion? I have one question, is there any request for that?
No.
All the time, but I mean...
No, it's just, it has to go before their board, but they have to formally request, since we have bid it per, you know, state bid law, they just have to request that, and evidently they've looked at theirs, and all right, we got a pretty good, you know, bid price on that, so...
That would have, obviously, a separate contract between that vendor, and so it would have nothing to do with us. They're just using our bid price.
I wouldn't share this one, yes. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes.
Okay, update, budget updates. Wanted to kind of tell you where we're at on the budget. We've been formulating the budget now, doing our estimates. We still have not got our estimate yet from the state. Go through the finance workshop on the twenty-ninth, no, twenty-eighth, next Thursday. So we should learn more there. Our staff has been working and is almost complete with our federal programs budget allocations there. We did sustain a small cut in Title One funding, but we did get an increase in our special ed funding. And we did get cut a little bit in Title Three. So they've been working that information out. It's about ready for approval, and we'll probably need to have a call meeting of the board on Wednesday of next week to approve that federal programs budget, because there is a May first deadline. There has been some issues. There was a mistake made, I think, from the State Department's level on this year's budget that actually ended up cutting us about seventeen thousand dollars. But they recognized that mistake, and they reimbursed us that seventeen thousand, so that's been corrected. But moving forward to the sixteen, seventeen budget, I should have more hard numbers after the twenty-eighth, and we'll probably have to have some call meetings early May to get that budget approved, get it to County Finance, and move through the budget process. But if you wouldn't mind, we probably need to mark our calendars for Wednesday, twenty-seventh, at five o'clock, for a call meeting to approve the federal programs budget.
And I'll ask the Vice Chair, Martin, if that was up to you.
That should be the only item on the agenda, we just need to fit that deadline, and they're working on completing that now. So they really probably had it, we could have brought it tonight, you know, for approval, I think they're ready, but I just don't like giving you all an item such as the budget right before the board meeting without any chance to look at it. So we'll get that out to you probably tomorrow, give you the weekend, and a couple of days next week, and then, you know, we'll come together on Wednesday and approve that. Okay, next item, kindergarten screening, pre-K screening. Ms. Turner, you want to talk about that, or you want me to?
I can't. I just have numbers, and then I'll let you add any other information you might like the board to know. Of course, we completed our screening last week, we did pre-K on Tuesday and Wednesday, and kindergarten on Thursday and Friday, and all things went well. As you know, as I believe I've shared with you, we moved it from Bobby Ray to West. This was our first time at West, and it went really well. We were a little concerned about our space, but it ended up working out, maybe some, some might say a little bit better. So we were very relieved that everything kind of went smoothly there. Our numbers for pre-K are down a little bit than they have been, at least over the past two years. We had a hundred and forty-two students that we screened, and that's just eligible students, which we do everything we can to fill our program from those students, first of all. We had several other children come through that are not income-eligible. So we're just going to kind of hold those kids and wait until the fall, until we start school, and like I said, maximize our enrollment with the income-eligible students, and then if there are any remaining slots available, then we'll start working from the income non-eligible, if you will, to build those slots. So that's our numbers. We fully expect that we'll get more. We have a total of a hundred and sixty available seats in pre-K, just for your information there. Again, a hundred and forty-two kids came through screening that met the income criteria. For kindergarten, we screened three hundred and eighty-two students, and those are just our straight kids that will be coming to us next year. We also provide screening for... We also provide screening for, um, private schools, um, so that's not including those numbers. The good news is that we were up a little bit from last year. Um, so, just like pre-K, we fully expect that we will have more kindergarten students than that. Um, our average usually is right around five hundred. We were a little bit down last year, um, from that, but when you average the last three years, I think it's four-hundred-and-ninety-eight kindergarten, incoming kindergarten students. Um, so, probably around a hundred is a good estimate that we might receive between now and then. Um, anything else you want to share about kindergarten screening?
Uh, I don't think so. I think, uh, it was well organized, well done, uh, especially having moved site and all and her folks did a great job with that. And they didn't have any, any ups there, so appreciate her doing that.
I, I will also say that we, um, used a different screening tool this year than we have in the past. In the past, we've used, um, a commercially available, uh, screening instrument and this year, we used a, uh, screening instrument that supervisors and kindergarten teachers and other leaders from, um, our region in the upper Cumberland developed together. Um, and we have found that that is going to give us more academic information than our other screeners. Um, so, our teachers are really excited about that. We, we have the information now. We're putting the information into a survey where we can kind of aggregate that information and look at it collectively and then we'll be getting that information out to teachers so they can have it for summer planning before school starts. So, I wanted to share that. Um, other information that I'll share, just generally about our ninety percent reading goal work. Um, we submitted a grant yesterday, um, sent that to the state for summer reading programs. It's called Reads Be Ready Grant. Um, we could apply for up to thirty thousand dollars and I think we were six dollars short of that in our application. If we are approved, um, we will be able to provide summer programming to sixty kids. We'll have at least one teacher at every elementary school. We have to maintain a one-to-five teacher-to-student ratio. And while that doesn't allow us to serve a very large number of kids, I think the kids that get that service, if we are, are awarded, will really benefit from, um, that work. It will, it will run for four weeks. Uh, we are also, we also wrote into the grant that we will have a site at, um, Hamilton Street Community Center for the Housing Authority there. So, you know, we, we wanted to be able to take a program to students as well that maybe couldn't come to the school. Um, so, I just wanted to share that information with you, Ms. Turner.
How, how long will that last? Is it just an hour, a day, four weeks?
The grant required that it had to be a minimum of four hours a day, um, and it had to run for four weeks. So, that's exactly what we're doing. Um, and with, you know what, when we were first looking at thirty thousand dollars, we were thinking we'd be able to do so much with it. But, when we had to kind of stay within that, that one-to-five ratio, it really kind of was a challenge to get that in. So, we really maximized that with our teachers, what we'd be able to do. And we also wrote in, um, to have librarians have, um, open library two hours a week, trying to kind of build family literacy, you know, and, and all that in as well, so. Four hours a day.
What grade, what grade?
Uh, it is for upcoming first, second, and third grade students. So, we're supposed to know, I think, early May, uh, whether we will be awarded.
Will we identify those children that we?
Uh, principals are already, um, aware. Principals are working on, um, selecting teachers that they'd like to kind of reach out to and, and ask to work the summer programming because we want it to be the right teachers. And then, um, they will also be looking after, after we know if we're funded, um, or not. They'll have a few weeks to be able to look at the students that they want to, um, to include in this, in this program. Um, we will be very strategic in those selections, both with high need and, um, students that we are confident that we will be able to come, you know, maintain high attendance. And we also have an incentive in, in the grant for, uh, attendance for parents.
So, the parents will be?
We're, we're trying to incentivize that, maybe through a gas card or a food card or, or something like that. Not, nothing monetary, but something that if they're driving their, their child to and from school every day, that they'll have kind of, um, a little bit to help them with that, a, a resource to help them with that.
That's a big shift that can happen on a summer for a child.
It really is, especially with those sizes. Yep. So, we hope we get it.
Especially when we talk about that summer learning loss and summer slide, you know, if we can identify those kids and have them come.
Four hours, four weeks?
That's right.
Yes, in very small groups with, with highly effective teaching.
Well, I, I think we all, complimentary for your work on that and, you know, one-to-five ratio, that is pretty, pretty intense. But, I, I agree with, with Mr. Chairman that that, that can make some, some huge difference. Making combating that, that summer fade or whatever you call it.
Yes, summer slide and, and I mean, our data shows that we experienced that, so. It will be very interesting if we get the grant to see what kind of impact that has and, and compare the results of those kids to the kids that.
And I hope you do, uh, think I've been studying on that.
We can certainly do that.
I think we'd like to see those numbers.
And that's part of the grant. There's all kinds of data that, that will be.
Is the first term that this grant has been available?
It is. Um, this was actually, it, it was an award to the state from Dollar General. They gave the state a million dollars and this is how the state decided to use that money. So, I think it's a great plan and, and, you know, I, I may be a little biased, but I think we had a very good application. So, I'm excited to hear that, that news.
By the way, the, uh, the, the screening at, at West Elementary, I was there. We did a little short, uh, radio interview, live radio interview on WCPI. And just to show you how good Warren County teachers are, you don't have to see it, but just so everybody knows, uh, I called, uh, called Melanie Crothers.
Yes.
Uh, to be the interview guest. She had no preparation for this, but she stood up there, did a wonderful job of explaining what was going on. The idea was to get a little bit more publicity and a little more. Upreach, uh, so the community would know about it, but, uh, Melanie did a, did an excellent job. She told me that some of those children were so excited about being there, they showed up with their little pint-sized backpacks. They wanted to know if they could stay all day, so.
I had read that story, but I'm, I'm glad to share it.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I'm glad to share that with you, but the kids were excited.
Yes.
You know, that first day, that first day of school, the, the parents handing off the child, you know, the stress is going to be on the parents, you know. But, uh, but, but the kids that I saw, they, they were loving it. They were ready to go.
And it, I, I have to say Melanie Crothers and Janet Nunnley organize our screening and they make sure that everything flows very well. They do a great job for that. It's, it's pretty hands-off for me. I, they, they take it and they, like I said, do a great job with it.
Well, I'm sure. They were very busy. It was, uh, they, they devoted, uh, great effort to it.
Yes, thank you.
Any year, I think it's, uh, it's great to know too that, you know, we're about to graduate some four-hundred-plus students from Warren County High School. And then, every year for the last twenty-five years that I've been involved in education, we enter around four to five hundred new kindergarteners. So, uh, that's, you know, to think our community, uh, is, is a strong community. I think that's a good sign, a strong community when you can have that many children coming in every year. So, it's, that's, that's great to see. Uh, appreciate all of her work with that. Um, next item, uh, is the personnel report. That's in your packet. I'm going to answer any questions if you have any, uh, of that. Okay, uh, under other business, we've got a few items under other business. One, uh, I think you have in your packet, a, the PD plan that was emailed to you. Uh, I think Ms. Wood has been working diligently on the PD plan of every school and the district. Uh, if you've got any words of, that you'd like to say about that.
Probably a pretty large file and, uh, we.
Yeah.
We collaboratively get together here at the district and kind of look at our strategic plan and then look at what we need to be focusing on, create our district plan and then beneath that, we send that to every school. And then they develop their plan to make sure that they're getting our goals. And then in turn, they have some specific things that they want to do also, which might be, some of them are focusing on behavior and getting PBI's going to their schools, those kinds of things. So, you have the district plan, then you have each school has their own plan. And then beyond that, we have some summer work that some teachers are doing this summer, uh, with early literacy, early numeracy, and a real focus on ACT and trying to get our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teachers into some training with regard to ACT, knowing that, that ACT is a test that really is about all of us and it's about the educational quality in Warren County. But, now pushing back into the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teachers so that they begin to understand ACT and even aligning our standards so that we know that our second grade teachers are actually teaching, uh, ACT standards. And our work with essentials, meaning that we don't want any student to leave the seventh grade unless they know these things and making sure that those pre-ACT skills are built in at the second grade, third grade level so that that filters up for our students and as they progress to high school, that ACT should be easier for them to handle, which I really think is going, we're going to see some dramatic results with that in the future. I really believe that. Um, so, that's part of that. And then with the calendar that was planned this year, we have opportunities in August during our district-wide gathering and then in November and in January and in March for the stockpile days to do some real intentional redelivery of the summer programming that certain teachers will go to and then they'll come back in PLCs that are district-wide for K eights. And they'll be able to sit and talk about those ACT standards and work on early, um, literacy and early numeracy and even some math things. So, you should see a plan that's very extensive there. It's district, it's school, and then it even takes in to the redelivery of some summer training that our teachers will do during our stockpile days. So, you should see all that in your collection of about twenty-five PDFs.
So, I, I think it's well done. I reviewed the plan. I think it's, uh, it is aligned with our strategic plan. It's aligned with what our goals are and I just recommend approval, uh, for that sort of committee part with the PD plan.
Do we have a motion to approve PD plan?
I have a motion to approve the PD plan.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
A second. Any discussion?
I'll just say this. We've often said it and, and I'm, I'm glad that you're taking this forward look in the PD plan. Uh, when you got to the tenth grade, it's a little late to start thinking about ACT. And I'm just delighted to hear that we're putting this emphasis early, early on and getting ready for it. So, but, good enough.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes.
We have one other item, but I, I would like to, to say to you that, uh, um, we have our teaching learning meeting every month. Betty and Autumn plan and run that meeting and, uh, they ask, uh, Ms. Wilmore, who's working with us on a, a one-hundred-day contract, to kind of do some ACT work and did a presentation to all of our principals. And she took the English Language Arts standards in fourth grade and correlated them to the ACT and showed the direct correlation between fourth grade English Language Arts and the ACT. So, if we truly are, you know, looking that deep into it and, uh, you know, starting early on showing that correlation. So, uh, hopefully, we can get all of our teachers to see that same presentation and understand that as well. So, uh, but, we're working in that direction.
It's kind of like planting a fruit orchard, isn't it?
It is.
You got to let it results in that first year. You gotta, you gotta.
Yeah, exactly.
Nurture it, nurture it for, for, for some, some time, but then, then it pays off.
That's true. That's true. Uh, last item on the operations report. Uh, we, as you are aware, we, uh, were told by the comptroller's office that, uh, we could not renegotiate our contract, uh, as planned with Durham School Services for our less service, uh, due to their, uh, ruling or, or definition that it was not a professional service. Uh, so, we rebid that contract. Uh, it was open today. Durham was the only bidder, uh, on to bid. So, the rate was the same, uh, rate that we had before, the same proposal. Like, I've reviewed that. Robin has reviewed that. Uh, so, we, we approved that last month at the same rate. But, since we did have, um, the contract bid, we would like to ask your approval again, uh, for that contract. It's, it is in the same format, uh, meets the same specs that we asked for. Um, we will take that financial management upon their approval. Then, uh, Robin will work out the contract details, you know, and get everything there, make sure we're good. And it would be a three-year contract with two one-year options to.
Mr. Chairman, since we've cleared all the legal, uh, issues in this, I'm going to move for adoption of a Durham School Services contract.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes.
Okay, what do you think? Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I think that concludes operations.
Did you say that?
Okay. I've been known to forget these things. You have to reassure them.
All right, this time we'll have our curriculum achievement, uh, report. Uh, Mr. Zack.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have one item, uh, policy action on first reading. Policy G, B, G, separation practices for non-tenure teachers. We've all had an opportunity to, uh, to, uh, read that, uh, several pages, uh, pretty much in line with, uh, existing plan. But, Robin, you or Bobby, want to offer any comments on it?
It's, this change, there's only one change on page two, one, thirty-four, thirty-six, and it just takes a leg for June fifth day and asks for statutory language within five days and stays by the last and scratch not due for the school year. After time that one must be noticed for that, and that's to be minors, and they've stopped that.
Right.
And that's the only change.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'm moving for adoption of, uh, policy G, B, G on first reading. There is a little, and just a little typo on page one, right on line twelve, but I'm sure it can be corrected on the, I think the word is supposed to be directed.
Page three?
Page one, yeah. There, there'll be line twelve, twelve and a half, yeah. Uh, I should, I should pull the typo.
Corrected for second reading.
But with that, uh, with that, uh, correction, Mr. Chairman, I'm moving for adoption.
Uh, we have a motion to approve G, V, G. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Just have one question. Um, did we not just, did we just not change this or something?
Um.
They, they did. They, they changed it, uh.
Last session.
Yeah, last session, I think, to move it from, uh.
March to, or April to?
May. It's moved from April to May to June.
Right.
And then now it's to this.
And then five days after last day of school.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been sort of a moving target. So, we're now.
I've been there every year.
Well, I think the, one of the reasons was the incident that, you know, happened, I think, in Knoxville where, uh, the principal was, was, had an honor due to an employee and had some violence in the school. Uh, then they moved it to after, you know, the June fifteenth, after school was out. And then they came back and a lot of schools dismissed at different times. So, uh, some run into June, some, you know, earlier in May. So, they said five days after the last day of school. So, that's, that was the reason behind the change.
You're right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, before we get away from curriculum and achievement, let me just mention very quickly, of course, you know, the General Assembly adjourned the hundred and ninth session yesterday or last night. And, uh, one of the bullets that public education narrowly dodged, uh, was, um, legislation that we call for a statewide referendum on a change to the state constitution. That, that element of the constitution says that it will be the responsibility of the state to provide an adequate education for all of its citizens. And when the constitution says an adequate education, that term applies to children from all zip codes, from whatever street address, whatever background, whatever socioeconomic condition. That has been the bedrock of, uh, public education progress in Tennessee, especially for the smaller rural districts that are not, uh, as affluent as some other districts. Uh, basically, that portion of the Tennessee constitution has been used in court to argue for more adequate funding for these, uh, less of the rest of the school districts, like ours. Uh, there was, uh, legislation, uh, proposed mainly by Representative Dunn out of Knoxville, uh, that would have changed that portion of the legislation here again, subject to referendum by the people. Uh, that would say, it would just add a few, few words, uh, to adequate education. The words that would be added, uh, would be as determined by the General Assembly. Of course, you know what that means. They could set the bar as low as they wanted to. It's, uh, sort of like, you know, educators in here sort. It's, uh, sort of like, you know, educators in here, sort of like letting the students grade their own exam papers. You know, you're probably going to come up with some pretty good numbers if they can, uh, grade their own exam papers and nobody's monitoring the situation. So it was just, in my opinion, uh, a means whereby, uh, the, those who don't support public education like people in this room do, could further, uh, devalue the public education and further deprive, uh, school systems like ours of funding. So we, we barely dodged that. I suspect it will be back again next year. So I just, I just warn for, you know, the, the good news is the general assembly has adjourned. That's the good news. So with, with hopefully minimal damage to the body politic. But there's always next year.
Thank you, Mr. Zack. At this time, we'll have facilities and resources committee, Mrs. Martin.
Out of the committee meeting, uh, we discussed about the Urban College, uh, access, uh, on the land that we purchased. And we will, um, uh, talked about, uh, everything will be paved in the new area and, uh, need a, we don't need a turning lane. Uh, then we went on to discuss about the, um, the three projects that are being, um, completed. Uh, Warren County High School athletic building in addition is completed this time, physical work, and we're waiting on the contractor to prepare the final closeout documentation. Bobby Ray Gym addition and renovation, um, is substantially complete. They're waiting on, uh, the school to end to, uh, do some more finalizations on, uh, the gym. Talked about the lining of the baseball courts and the center court symbol has been, uh, designed and the rela-, uh, relining of the side goals. Urban College school addition renovation, um, waiting also on school to be out to finish a lot of the, um, the work there. Uh, we talked about the dining room, uh, just lacks the floor polishing. Sixty percent of the kitchen equipment is in place. The floor is ninety-five percent complete. The home bleachers are being installed. The opponent side is completely installed. Uh, the utility installation is being finalized at this time. And, um, the demo siding on the hillside is complete, just waiting on the drive to be paved. And that's all I have at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody have any questions? Ms. Martin, if there are any other committees that need to report. See anybody else? Anything for our meeting?
Uh, I think just one item is the meeting on the twenty-ninth, uh, April twenty-ninth, which always for making travel, uh, for, for that. That will be with Belmont, uh, and that's, we'll work on getting your, uh, Academy credit on email to make sure you get your credit there, but, uh, we'll try to arrange a time for everybody to meet there. And we'll be meeting with the Murray County Board of Education at TSB at the front on the twenty-ninth. So I'll get all the logistics. We'll get that out next week.
So you have anything for that? About, when do I go ahead? All right, this time I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Call if they will say aye.
Aye.
Pose like some? If you are a chairman, thank you.
I have a evaluation package. Uh, you'll need to get this back to the flyer by May the tenth. That works well because you may not have a retreat, so you can bring it that time.
This is the review.
Congratulations.